Here we go. I'm not sure if Jackie was planning on attending. Does anyone know? Or, or Mike?
Jackie. Jackie's here. Hillary's here. The mayor's here.
Yep. I think it's just Mr. Dillon that we're...
Did everybody hear? Did everybody read that Jerry not his brother passed away?
Oh, yeah. Okay, well hopefully Mr. Dillon will maybe joining us. I'm just not sure. So if we could ask the clerk to call the roll?
Chief Person Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Mr. Howie? Pre-present.
Great. Um, okay, so if we could start, uh, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Turner, how you'd like to proceed with the presentation? We have all the materials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Turner, if you can share your screen. I'll open up the presentation for you and then, uh, Ms. Turner will walk you through it. Uh, the entirety of the cabinet is available for questions here this evening. Uh, so first, uh, just to contextualize the conversation here. This is a continuation of our, our budget conversation from, uh, last spring. That seemed like it was ongoing because it was ongoing for several months. If you recall, we didn't finalize our budget until the late part of the fall because of the 112 budget requirements from the state, uh, due to the uncertainty from COVID-19. So this conversation here is about adjusting our budget. As we anticipated at that time, we made some conservative decisions to make sure that we were in a position, this position, where we could adjust from a positive fiscal outlook rather than having to adjust in terms of cuts later on in the year. So this is just contextualizing us to the strategic plan and our core beliefs. I believe the committee knows this. You're saying it in your sleeps, but in your sleep. But for the community, uh, these are the core beliefs that structure and undergird our strategic plan. Next slide, Billy Joe.
So the agenda tonight is going to include a summary of our revenue sources, an FY21 budget to actuals, a limitation of use of savings, the alignment of our finances with our educational plan, the strategic goals and additional FY21 investment opportunities and recommended action. The summary of the revenue sources, as you may know from the last few weeks, um, are FY2021 savings, which we will adjust the original spending plan to align with our current needs and goals. There's approximately $10.5 million with that. We also have FY2122 Chapter 70 money. Um, the general fund, the local fund dollars, it increased from $10.3 million. Um, it was 170, it's now $177 million for Chapter 70. The third pool of money is an FY21 through 23 S2 funds, $17.8 million over two years.
Can I ask before we move forward? So looking at the three different revenue sources? So the FY2021 savings is, am I reading right? That's the same basically as the FY2122 Chapter 70, right? Or is it, we're able to roll over from?
It's actually two completely separate things. The first one, FY2021 savings is for current year, Chapter 70. So the $10.5 million is coincidentally so close to the $10.3. The $10.5 is just what we project as our savings for this current year. We will then get an additional $10.3 million in FY2122 for the increase in Chapter 70.
But looking at the increase for next year, is that based on, on a projected budget? Cause we don't have any kind of...
We have the governor's budget.
Oh, okay. You don't have any kind of real budget. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Um, FY21 budget to actuals as reported in the budget update that we provided at the prior meeting. Um, our continued analysis of the previously adopted budget compares, um, the budget to actual expenditures and we have found a anticipated savings in several key areas. The vacancy savings we talked about with unfilled positions and retirement savings is currently projected to result in a salary line savings of $5.2 million. The long-term subpool is $200,000. The day-to-day subpool is projected to have a $1 million saving. And the savings in transportation is estimated to be 4.1. We reduced it from the original four, um, the one that we presented last time, which was 4.8 because we did not include in that projection the assumption that we'll go back up to 66 buses for April, May and June when we bring, um, when we expand again.
The limitations... I'm sorry, Billy Joe, that, that anticipates 50% for April, May and June?
Um, April, May and June would go up to 66 buses, which is our original budget.
Well, okay, so it would be, okay, looking at 100%?
Yes. So if we did not, if we did not use the 66 buses, we would have an additional, um, savings. And that's why these numbers keep fluctuating because as our plan changes.
Okay.
Could I ask a question on this slide, please?
Sure.
Um, when you look at the vacancy savings due to retirements, are you factoring in sick leave buyback? Uh, do you have a nu- a ballpark number of what that would be? Or is that budgeted somewhere else?
That's budgeted somewhere else and I actually track that too. And if we had a shortage in that line, I would automatically reduce the savings that I'm showing you here. So when I, you know, for instance, long, I don't list the sick leave buyback here because we don't have a shortage or a surplus right now. Right now, we're, we're still in February, so it could change where we have, you know, let, um, more of a shortage in the sick leave buyback line. But right now we have a, um, a plus 30,000.
Great, thank you.
So the next one, we've already gone over before, but I just want to reiterate that the limitations of use for these savings, we cannot carry the funds forward just like make, um, increase next year's budget by this amount. We cannot prepay for salaries or services, but we can prepay for supplies and tech. Another limitation of use is the window of time. You can't make decisions too soon due to the need in the accurate forecasting, but we still need to make decisions quick enough to act. And then there are limitations to how funds can be used while remaining compliant with next school spending, which I've been monitoring. Any facility cost over 150,000 um, cannot be counted toward next school spending. And equipment over 5,000 is, they're not considered eligible either. And, Joe?
Sure. So here again, it's important to, to remember that the entire budget is our financial plan to implement, to operationalize our educational plan. So what you're going to see in front of you that, uh, Ms. Turner will share and the cabinet's prepared to answer questions on are our recommendations based on feedback from staff, feedback from the community, uh, and the analysis of data in terms of needs related to our strategic plan that are eligible and allowable expenditures, uh, within that school spending and allowable within FY21 parameters. So here is just again contextualizing us back to the strategic plan prior to going into each individual recommended expenditure for FY21 savings. So Mrs. Turner?
Connie, can I ask a quick question?
Yep, absolutely. I would say to anyone, just yell, cause I can't see anybody.
Right.
In configuration, go right ahead.
So on the last slide, um, can we pay for, um, can we prepay for some of our summer school stuff though? I thought we could prepay for, um, some of the salaries for that.
No, we cannot prepay for cer- um, salaries. We could prepay for services. I mean, not sorry, um, we could prepay for supplies, um, and tech and curriculum. But we can buy the summer school curriculum and tech, you know, things like that. But we cannot, um, prepay their, you know, the stipends or the salaries.
All right, cause the other districts told me they could, but...
That's odd. I don't, I don't know that. Maybe they misunderstood the question because we would get in big trouble. The auditor was, you know, that was one of the reasons we had a bad bill this year because we had services like a so, um, stipends from June and she wouldn't pay this year's money because it was a different fiscal year. So I don't know if they misunderstood or I don't know if they do it. But, um, so this would, I recommend that we go, there, it, there's four goals. And because it is long, if you want, I can just go over all goal one and then stop so that we can discuss it. If, um, and then if that's how you want to break it up so that it's not so long.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, Billy Joe.
Okay. So goal number one, as, um, reflected on the previous slide, is to improve academics and student achievement at every school site. We have approximately $7.6 million in that, um, goal. The two investment priorities for this goal would be to expand in-person learning and digital learning. This first investment priority, I can't see because of the face. How do I do this? The first investment priority is expanded in-person learning. The school committee set the following target dates for the returning students to in-person learning. February 22nd today, the students would, um, in substantially separate programs who were previously participated in our model, learning model. They're, they've started again today. March 1st. Um, the students who were not in a substantially separate program but previously served in the in-person, um, portion of our school year, they're coming back March 1st. And April 1st, we'll do a further expansion. To do this, we need certain, uh, certain resources are needed. One of the, um, resources is supplemental staff. Another is professional development. Another is COVID-19 testing and digital learning. So this slide here is showing you about the supplemental staff that we would need. Due to, um, teachers that are exempt from in-person teaching, we may need about six additional teachers to support instruction. We need about 15 additional paraprofessionals to serve in short-term leaves of absent roles such as maternity leave. They're likely to be filled with paraprofessionals, but if not, filled with the postings. They're, it's leaving our paraprofessional, paraprofessional positions opened. The additional one to two pairs per school, that would be to in, um, to offer individualized support for students. It would be to provide a built-in subpool and it would be further coverage for expected quarantining. This would cost us about $270,000. Um, we have, oh, sorry. We also are going to fill the positions that are currently open, the ones that created the vacancy savings. Those positions include 14 teachers, 41 pairs, one guidance counselor at the high school, one school-based climate specialist, three coaches and two clerks. So the, that amount is already counted in the budget, so we don't have to ask, we don't have to shift those funds. Um, the next, yes?
Um, is, is that a very, very conservative number, the 270,000? Is, is it possible to have available, um, additional staff more than what you've listed? Is that a outrageous?
Well, just so you know, it's going to be difficult to fill the paraposition anyway because if you look down below, there's 41 pairs. But we're really looking at hiring 56 pairs and, um, and 20 teachers and things like that. So it's not that, it's not, I don't think that there's a problem with adding more, but what, I don't think we need to add more money because these people are going to all be hired at different intervals. So we're not going to need the full amount for each of them. When we did a calculation, it was based upon all of them start in April 1st. Some of them might start April 5th, April, you know, 14. But if we find that we need more, we can always move money from different areas because I'm sure there are going to be more savings, um, in non-salary lines, lines, you know, when we have to cancel purchase orders at the end of the year. We always end up having extra money from that too.
Um, and I know later on in the presentation, you do, do address, um, IT situations. But I, while I have this particular thing, subject on, on the top table here, I hope that we can add, uh, desperately add people to the IT department because you know very well that they have been working like crazy over there.
I agree with you, but just, um, just so you know, we did, um, hi- hire two existing like, um, it's almost like tutors, but they're technology people. So they're part-time people and they were supporting the IT staff. So no, I, no one's doing overtime anymore, so...
Oh, good. Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
But when they were working, they were getting paid for it.
And could I follow up? I also have a question on this slide.
Sure.
Um, when you're talking about adding staff, um, how is that going to impact our class sizes? Whether it's remote or in-person trying to do hybrid? Um, I'm hearing anecdotally that we've got some pretty big, uh, class sizes. So is that part of this plan with increasing staff to reduce the class sizes? Whether it's a fully remote class of 45 students or a teacher trying to do hybrid? I'm just curious.
Chief Hillary, could you answer that question?
I can actually, uh, Ms. Turner, cause I don't, I don't see Dr. Hillary on the screen. So right now our priority is to make sure that we keep our teacher-student relationships and our class rosters consistent. Class size reduction actually would have us shifting students to new teachers and shifting students across different class rosters. Here, what we're going to be doing is making sure that we are able to support our teachers. But the goal is going to be to keep our classes and class rosters and our teacher-student relationships as consistent as we can. That's the best que- answer I can give you until we're building out the actual school-based plans. We're still, we're finalizing our surveys to see who's coming into in-person. You can see here that there's additional support here, uh, plan. We can support students and we can support teachers. But also what we're working to do is make sure we can keep consistency and continuity for our kids as well. So if we went to a class size reduction, uh, structure, it would both, it would do a couple of things that I don't know, uh, we would want to get to into as part of our reopening plan. One, it would need more space and we already are constrained. It's the biggest constraint that we're following right now is our class size constr- or space constraint. And the second is it would cause us to adjust class rosters and class schedules, which we're also working to avoid.
Okay, so I just... Dr. Boyd, we'd be able to, and this is based on past classroom size reduction efforts that we've had in place in the district. I mean, the ability to, to assign co-teachers so that you've got, I mean, I think particularly in these large, large, kind of with a large class roster and having to, to implement, uh, you know, a hybrid model. You know, adding in an additional teacher or an additional para, um, you're able to do that without kind of blowing up your, your class roster. Um, but you're able to really leverage the teacher and the teaching team that's already in place, but be able to add that additional support in a way that I think can be seamless.
Well, we'll certainly take the note. I think the one question that the committee's going to continue to have to reflect upon is just the amount of hiring that's reasonable. Uh, so we'll take the note and make sure that we can assess it. Here, what we're talking about is in a matter of weeks, hiring 20 teachers and, uh, 55 paraprofessionals. And that's also a question in front of us, but we'll certainly take the note. I think it's important points that you bring up.
If, if I could just add one more thing, when we're looking at the hybrid model, my understanding is there is another adult in the room with the teacher. And maybe it's a para, but they're look, they're watching the kids remotely on the screen while the teacher is teaching to both groups and mostly react, you know, relating with the students in front of him or her. Uh, that's where I'm thinking about addressing the class size, another adult. And however that works out, I just think it would be a benefit to the kids and to the teachers.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Howie?
Um, when we, I keep hearing the word hybrid and I know recently we talked about it in the school committee. Uh, but when we talk about expanding in-person learning, um, one figure I haven't seen yet, maybe it's coming up in the presentation, professional development. I think that's going to be a pretty good chunk of money. So when my colleague Andy asks, is that's all we're going to be spending is 270,000? I think, uh, when you look at professional development, it might be a bigger number. I just wanted to see if this is the time to bring in front of the superintendent, um, above...
It does come up later in the presentation, Bob. Thank you. Billy Joe?
Okay. Um, so one of the other resources we need to expand in-person learning is, um, professional development. We're going, we're, we're requesting that we spend 2.4 million dollars on this. Uh, we would, we suggest that we do eight hours at the per DI rate for professional development prior to implementation of a hybrid model for all instructional staff. So this, there would also be an optional after-school and weekend session. We want to do training on new classroom hardware. That includes the cameras and the monitors. We want to do training on continued use of software to support the hybrid model. That includes Seesaw, Google Classroom, iReady and Benchmark Assessment. We want to do flipped classroom models, have tiered intervention strategies. Then we wanted, we have another professional development plan where there are 40 hours and they're at a contractual rate. If you look to the left in the, um, burgundy section, you'll see that the hourly rate, um, is for all those people that are making less, I mean, working less than four hours. If they're working less than four hours, they get the hourly rate. It jumps up if it, if they get the per DI rate. So, um, these, these hours would be for classroom design and setup as well as the pre-planning, lesson development, continued bottle refinement throughout the course of implementation. Um, there would be additional planning and curriculum development beyond the contractual workday. I believe they were suggesting one hour extra per week. And, um, this would also include additional collaborative planning for simultaneous instruction for the in-person and remote and structured time for teacher-led mid-course improvements to the hybrid model. Um, we're, we're suggesting 2.4 million dollars for this. Another resource that we need to expand the in-person learning is the COVID pool test in. We don't have an accurate estimate on how much it will cost yet. We, well, we have estimates, but we, within a few weeks, we'll have more of a, a clearer picture of exactly how much it will cost. But approximate costs so far include a $50 per pool test and that includes five to 10 people within each pool. And that's $40,000 per week, which is for, um, 8,000 students. And it's about, yeah, it's for $480,000. But this COVID pool test in cost of, um, 560,000 that we're suggesting includes the pool test, the administrative fees, a program facilitator salary, um, or slash a nurse, um, a chorea, follow-up testing and stipends for volunteer and sample collector. Another resource...
They asked who the vol- the volunteer, who's that going to be?
Um...
Just like a person within the school community or?
I'm not sure. Um, Chief Hall, can you answer that?
Uh, yes, Ms. Martin. So the facilitators stated, or the states stated, willing to, uh, help pay paraprofessionals or teachers.
It's the finance subcommittee, but it's about the next part of the...
For the extra duty.
Okay, thank you very much. But it'll be, uh, one of our staff basically is, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Another resource needed to expand in-person learning is the indoor air quality. We have, um, 1,032 air purifiers, plus we have 30 on the way from Desi. Um, these will be on hand for 974 standard classrooms in the district. Additional purifiers are recommended for other instructional spaces such as the gym, the library. The gym would require four more units. The library would require two more units. If we get 200 additional air purifier, purifiers, purifiers at $300 a unit, um, this would allow for expanded classroom space. We could use the libraries, gyms and cafeterias with these additional units. This is at a cost of approximately $60,000.
A question on that? But to come back to that, um, so this, this question is, uh, for the superintendent, but, um, does the, the concept of that CO2 monitor in every classroom, does that not have legs? Cause I think that would go a long way to allay a lot of our teachers' concerns about being in a classroom and, and, and eliminate the need for an outside source to come in and do the, all the evaluations. Um, cause you'd be doing it in real time. And you'd have a monitor right there in the classroom that, that would say, yep, too much CO2 in this room, this shouldn't be in here. Uh, I think that would be, go a awful long way to, to quiet everybody on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota. Yes, there's, um, it had, it certainly has some validity there. Dr. Hall and his team have been reviewing it. We just don't have the findings of the review in order to bring a, a coherent recommendation to the committee. But I appreciated your, uh, guidance on having us look into it. Dr. Hall, do we have any updated information since, uh, last week on the CO2 monitors Mr. Dakota's been recommending? You're on mute, Dr. Hall.
Don't have any further info right now, Dr. Boyd, other than what you relayed, but we're still working on it.
Okay, thank you.
So the next investment priority that we would discuss is digital learning. And the last time we had a, a digital learning plan was in 2015, from 2015 through 2018. They were increasing the use of classroom technology as the focus. Um, due to budgetary constraint, this was limited for FY17, 18 and 19. But in FY20, with the savings that we had, we were able to increase the technology budget to support the one-to-one student device distribution. We had over 14,0650 Chromebook, MacBook and iPads, um, given to students. We had 1,500 hotspots for students and families. The classroom hardware and staff device upgrades are now necessary to support the continued digital literacy in the classroom. It is, um, estimated that our current staff devices range between six and 10 years old. So the resources needed of digital learning, um, our classroom hardware and staff device upgrades. We, um, suggest based upon a review that we need classroom interactive displays for approximately 450 classrooms. We need teacher and school-based administrators, device replacements. Um, they're all like approximately six years old. We need device distribution for the new students that are coming in. We need central office clerical device replacement. Again, their computers are six years old and they're, um, many of them are desktops. And we were, um, wanting to do docs and laptops. So if there's ever any need to move around, they're not stuck in one spot. We're, um, we're suggesting school clerks and custodian device replacement. Their computers are six to eight years old. We have a miscellaneous need of 75,000. And then we also request, um, an IT device distribution of 24,000. So just for, um, a point of interest is that the custodians are required to communicate via email. So we want them to have updated computers as well so that they're not, they have to do the, use the ticket system to report bills and issues. But if their computers are extremely slow, they're not going to be able to do that. But anyhow, the resources needed for digital learning approximate 4.2 million dollars.
I think that's a great investment to make right now. Yes, Mr. Dakota?
Um, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Um, now that teachers are more comfortable with, uh, probably more comfortable with technology and using technology, uh, as a teaching tool, I think we're going to probably see teachers using the technology that's available out there more, more inclusively in their everyday teaching, in-person teaching. So I think it's going to be very, I, I think it's, we really may have to make sure that everything is current, up to date uh, and, and usable in, in those ways.
And that's why it's, um, important for us to, um, suggest or recommend that the 2.7 million dollars in PD because if we get all these new, all this new technology and we don't pair it with the professional development necessary for them to master the skills, then we're kind of getting a Lamborghini, Lamborghini and driving a horse and buggy. So it's, you know, better for us to get that PD in.
I like that analogy.
So if do, that was the end of goal one, do we want to discuss goal one? Any questions?
I'm good.
I'm good too.
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Um, when you were talking about the devices, um, for the buildings, are you doing a, a laptop for each custodian or one per school?
No, the, the laptops would not be for the custodians. They would get a desktop and the school clerk would also get a desktop. The recommended laptop, um, and dock station would be for the clerk and central office.
All right, so the custodial office gets a new updated, um, desktop?
Yes.
Okay. And then when you guys are talking about, when Andy was asking and you're talking about professional development, who's, who pays for the professional development? Does that come out of the, uh, central office funding then or something?
Well, that, we're suggesting to use these extra funds. Um, well, in a typical year, we have a P, a professional development budget at central office that Chief Desmond, um, manages and makes sure that everyone gets, um, the professional development necessary for the curriculum that she's, um, working with. But the schools also get to take a portion of their school-based allocate allocation. When they get a lump sum, they get to break it down between general supplies, technology, PD. So they get to do it. The professional development plan that we, um, are talking about here, we're recommending we use the savings for this. And again, it was the, um, eight hours for all staff to, um, prior to the hybrid model implementation. And then 40 additional hours for the, um, you know, additional plan and the curriculum development.
So that would be a, a plan driven by the curriculum office?
Yes.
As opposed to at the school site level?
Yes.
Okay, cause we moved around a lot of professional development money over the last few weeks, like from one school account to another school account, but they don't, so we're not using any of that money.
No, so, and just so you know, the reason why one school, so that was a good question when you brought that up. The reason it looked confusing is because when we did student funding, we allowed schools to spend money in the way they wanted to do it. So if they planned on doing a lot of professional development this year on in-person activities and then we didn't warrant in-person, they may not have done the professional development that they had hoped for. PD for remote learning was provided, um, by central office, so they didn't have to use their own funds for that. So they might have extra money at PD and that's when they would move it back to general supplies or technology. Others wanted to do PD remotely for the remainder of the year. So they, it's all just a matter of their choice. Others wanted to do PD remotely for the remainder of the year, so they, it's all just a matter of their choice. It's not, but that is separate. That is a separate pool of PD.
All right, so what about all the money we moved for technology at school?
Technology in schools is for different, we're doing a tech, like, to be honest, with all this technology investment at the Central Office, if we go through with all of, you know, like our, well, we did go through with it. But with all that we have, a school may elect to do technology, another technology purchase that could be, say, a smart board. We haven't, we haven't talked about investing in smart boards right now, right? That wasn't one of the things we were doing. But if one of them, one of the schools wanted a smart board in a classroom replaced, they would use their technology money for that. So they still.
And you just said we're gonna use, we're gonna use two million dollars for four hundred and fifty classrooms.
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Mayor. She's referring to what might have been done in the past. Billy Joe, can maybe you provide some examples of real time? He's just providing some examples, Mr. Mayor. Here you have, if this goes through with approval, you're right, you have four hundred and fifty classrooms. You have approximately nine hundred and fifty classrooms district-wide. So this investment won't get you to district-wide for every single classroom. It'll get you significantly toward that effort, but it won't get you all the way there. But previously, you've seen some of those adjustments in schools, the Akeny's adjustments. You'll need less of those with this investment here, that top bullet. Classroom interactive displays is the the new line, which that's all encompassing of the different various technologies around smart boards now.
And just so, and just so, let's say, for instance, four hundred and fifty classrooms get the smart boards or whatever interactive display is now being researched, then they probably, they wouldn't need to put money in their technology budget. They would use it elsewhere. And that's why we give the schools the autonomy to do this. But I mean, we always gave them the autonomy to spend their lump sum money for the school itself on, they got to choose. But now with fair student funding, they really get to choose. So if they wanted to do a big technology investment, they could, you know, reduce how many tutors they hire, just so they can increase the technology investment. But with us doing so much down here with our recommendations, they would not have to put so much in technology next year.
Can I follow up too? I have a question. When you're thinking about the professional development, what is the timeline with the technology purchases? Because it doesn't seem like we have very much time. So we've got to buy all this technology, whether it's hard or soft technology, and have it in place in order to do the most, I would think, effective professional development. So can someone speak to the timing of how that's gonna happen?
Yeah, this technology that you've got right here is 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 not gonna be there in a month for this level of four million dollars of investment in technology. That's not gonna be procured within a matter of a few weeks. You won't even have a chance to approve it until the next school committee meeting in March. There's been additional equipment, however, we already have purchased in anticipation of expanding. Remember, the plan has always been to expand in-person learning. So Ms. Desmond, can you share a little bit about what's been procured previously? And the timing on much of these purchases, particularly for the community that's listening? This, we don't procure this amount of resources within a matter of weeks. This is largely gonna be around next school year. It's gonna be there in our classrooms for our teachers. But right now, we've already procured additional technology, additional hardware, in anticipation of reopening more classrooms here this year. Ms. Desmond, can you share a little bit more detail for Mr. Orde?
Certainly. So we, in anticipation of bringing our students back in a safe manner, we we purchased a thousand digital cameras that are adaptable to the current hardware, the MacBooks that the teachers have, so that they're able to utilize that technology to be able to transmit what's going on in the classroom to students that perhaps are in a remote setting. Again, that was in anticipation of the fact that we have to social distance, and we don't necessarily have enough space for everyone. And if if that wasn't going to be the case, the the technology is still could still be utilized for other things going on within the classroom for all in-person learning. So it's a good investment. To go back to the slide around the the resources needed, I think you may recall, I shared a bit about our digital learning plan that we're building out for next year because our existing plan has expired. Within that plan, it was identified very early on that our teachers, for example, have six-year-old devices. Our custodians have ten-year-old devices, and our clerks have, I believe, six-year-old devices. So this is really phase two of upgrading technology now that all of our students have the new technology. So the anticipation of making this purchase really is so that we are set up for the start of next year to be able to stay ahead of devices that we know are really aging out for our, for all of our staff.
I think it brings up a good point here and a good opportunity, Ms. Orde. Madam Chair, if I could take a moment. There's, it's often when we look at this opportunity for investments in our schools, our students, and support for our teachers, if these are longstanding needs, that because of the fiscal constraints that the district has been facing, that many other districts, they've already been able to make these investments. And unfortunately, here in Lowell, we haven't. So when you're seeing these types of ages of hardware, the fact that many of our classrooms don't have interactive displays already within, you know, many of these investments that you're gonna see will start getting into facility improvements and those types of discussions. These are needs that have been longstanding in the district, and these are now opportunities to invest in those longstanding needs. And that's an important thing, concept to keep in mind as we talk about the additional revenue coming to the district. There's there's needs that well extend beyond the additional revenue coming in because of the fiscal constraints that the district's been facing over years. And this is kind of a really big example of that with this type of investment in technology. In some cases, we're just reinvesting in devices and hardware that we should have invested in as a as a district years back, but couldn't because of the constraints financially in front of us.
Excuse me?
Yes, Mr. Orde?
Very much. I have a hard time getting in. I don't know why, but thank you, Connie. Mr. Superintendent, we, and I've been trying to kind of get in after what Andy said. I'd like to get a report from, is it Casey that runs the ITech department? Is that who the boss is of the ITech?
That's Ms. Desmond. Casey Nelson reports to Ms. Desmond.
Okay, well, then, Ms. Desmond, then the other one. I would like to have a report on, I, buying all these new devices, I have no problem. I always vote for this, and I'm glad we're gonna have the money to do it. But when Andy said staff, I have a feeling that we're severely down in the staff. I think we need someone at the high school, definitely just one more person there. We probably need a couple of more for all our middle schools, because they need that desk help. I know I use it quite a bit, so I think we kicked Andy's idea pretty quick to the curb. I think we gotta remember about staff. That's all, Ms. Desmond. Thank you.
We'll certainly take that note, and I think it's an important note when Mr. Dakota brought it up, and I appreciate it, Mr. Holly. We'll certainly take that note.
Did I proceed?
Yep.
Okay. So goal number two is to improve the operational efficiency across the system. We recommend one point two million dollars for this goal. The investment priority here is to maintain district positive financial outlook going forward. We wanted to point out that the use of the FY twenty-one savings to prepay allowable expenses in FY twenty-two to create greater budget flexibility for next year. If, however, using the current year non-recurring, non-recurring savings to offset next year's recurring expenses creates the risk of a funding cliff for the following year. Because if we save money from next year's budget, we're gonna have to add that back before we even begin on the following year. We used prepayments this past year as one of, on one part of our overall budgeting strategy. We did that during, you know, the economic downturn, but the risks were mitigated by the fact that we knew SOA funds were expected in FY twenty-two. There are also two additional streams of recurring revenue, which are unlikely to come in FY twenty-two, but they could potentially be realized in FY twenty-three, which again limits the risk of strategic budget offset this year. We, for instance, enrollment variability due to COVID nineteen. On one of the previous presentations, I showed how we lost over four million dollars for the reduction of three hundred and five students on our foundation budget for the October first data. That, those numbers are probably, we're very confident those numbers are gonna go back up, which would, you know, which would cause an increase in revenue again when the students come back. We also are hoping that we would get the required increase from the city contribution. Their required minimum contribution increased by three point one million dollars. So there is hope for the, you know, increased funding in that respect, too. The resources, the resources recommended to maintain the district's positive fiscal outlook going forward would be to proactively and responsibly offset the FY twenty-two expense baseline. So like we did last year, we would like to prepay certain things like district-wide curriculum supplies. I spoke to the city CFO, and we both remembered, you know, and it hasn't happened for the last couple of years, but we both remember how you're, the new, let's just put it like this, the auditor coming in is probably going to remember clearly how we could do a purchase order at the end of the year, move the funds into the suspense account, do a purchase order against the suspense account, and use those funds in the summertime. That hasn't been allowed the last couple of years, but we're, we don't see why not, because it's, you're allowed to do it immunis, and the previous auditor would be aware of it. So the CFO and I had this conversation, and we plan on speaking with Cheryl Wright, the, you know, the interim auditor, when she arrives, just to confirm that this is doable. And so this suspense account can go up or down. It's like a nice balancing account for us. If we end up having additional funds available, we could put, increase the suspense carryover amount so that the school department has access to it even after June thirtieth. Another thing we plan on, that we recommend doing is to replenish the revolving accounts by five hundred thousand. As, the only account that we have room to do that in is the circuit breaker account. And as you know, the circuit breaker account has a very healthy balance. But we built last year's budget because we knew this year was tight. We built it with more money coming from the circuit breaker account than usual. So we could fix that, we could put that back to where it usually is by, and replenish it by five hundred thousand. Another thing that we plan on doing is grant offsets delayed, where we could let the grant, cost that usually hit the grant, hit the local budget, that would use up our local revenue, I mean, our local revenue, and then allow us to carry the grant funds forward. But the total approximate cost of this would be one point two million dollars. Now, we, we could have done other things like prepaid school supplies and all that like we did last year, but it was very messy, and it's, and we have enough needs, we have enough needs to like offset the rest of this savings. Any, that was the end of goal two. Do you want to discuss goal two before we move on?
My only kind of comment would be, Billy Joe, knowing that, I mean, and this is obviously a moving target because things are gonna change, and you know, so we all know that. Would we be able to, because I understand the the complexity of the school-based kind of decision-making. But if there was an opportunity, if we do see, you know, maybe it's some salary savings or, or, you know, the the grant offsets, would there be a way to give additional technology support? I mean, we're gonna be making a major district-wide investment, which is great. And, you know, and that will impact every school, but there are still gonna be, I suspect, technology needs that they may be interested in, that may be having a wishlist for each school so that we could maybe, if we get an extra, you know, hundred thousand dollars, maybe that that we know we're gonna save in salary, that could be kind of all ready to go, that we could just pluck out individual purchases for school? Just to ensure that when we, because when we get to the thirtieth, you know there'll be a mad dash, you know we're gonna, you know, it'll just be crazy. If we could do a little proactive asking so that we could make that happen a little more smoothly.
If you mean, if you mean for the schools themselves, if we did agree to do that, if all of you chose to do that, we would have to do it before a deadline that the city has for spending, which is, you know, in April. So we would have to make that type of choice before, before April, which I think is a great idea. One thing that we may face is the schools, because they didn't, they weren't there, and they're so, they have so many savings already, they may have a hard time spending it, which is odd to say, but they're already like, we're trying to encourage them to spend all their money. Not to say that they, if they have the chance to spend something else, I think that'd be a great idea. So I can put that on this list right here, being that we're looking for ideas from you and bring, and meet with Joel about it and see how much we can do that, you know, how to go about doing that.
It might be worth it, just to, you know, because they're making their spending decisions now for the money they do have, that they do know about. But as they're doing that process, if they, you know, just could kind of develop that extra, that next level of 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 purchasing. I mean, April is soon, but it's not tomorrow. I mean, it gives us two months to have a sense of what our spending is gonna look like. So we may have some ability to to use that effectively if we do a little preliminary work now.
Right, I agree. And just so you know, we do, I do the projections every two weeks. So every two weeks, the projection, I see it growing or decreasing, so I'm able to share that with you guys and and we can discuss it with, you know, as, like, make that decision. So once we, like, like you said, if we just look at the projections going forward after this, because I'm sure there's going to be more, I don't think that we're going to, I wouldn't recommend this amount of of budget adjustment if I knew we were really close. It's because I anticipate even more coming that I think we should make this move.
I agree. Yep, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, I have one quick question on this slide. So go over the, what's the replenish the revolving account again? How does that work?
Okay, so normally, when we spend money on out-of-district tuition, it hits our local budget, and then we do an expense transfer, and we move that, the cost from the local budget, and we move it to the circuit breaker, which eats up the circuit breaker money. So the circuit breaker, we have a balance in there, plus we get reimbursement for the following year, and it was depleted. We built it back up to the top. When we built it back up to the top, when we did our budget last year, instead of just saying five million dollars on local budget and two million on circuit breaker, instead we said, let's put more on the circuit breaker side and eat more of that up, which means we have room to replenish that. So if we have extra money right now, instead of like it just wasting it, we could actually spend less on the circuit breaker side so that it's fully, just there's no more room to put in there, anything in there. It's making savings account as fat as you can get it. So that next year, when we face problems, like or the year after, we have something to fall back on when the sped out-of-district tuition increases. That's what that account is there for, because sped fluctuates so much that if we get ten more students, as you know, if we're paying a hundred thousand, we pay three hundred thousand dollars for one student that came across my desk a couple of months ago. So if we get ten new students, that could be a couple of million dollars. And if we have that circuit breaker account fully replenished, then we, we're in a good place. So all I'm saying is if we have these savings, instead of just, just letting them go to waste, why wouldn't we do what's best for the school department and for the student?
Okay, so is it not a good idea to like prepay sped costs then?
Well, we could prepay, so that's one of the rules. You know how I said you can't prepay the services?
Right.
One of the laws say that you can prepay special ed out-of-district tuition. However, if I, if you have a choice between replenishing your own savings account or prepaying a student's tuition, I would say replenish your savings account, because what happens is if you prepay for a student, and then that student gets kicked out of that school, or that student is re, you know, sent to a different district because, or a different school because they're not meeting his need, kids move all the time. If that happens, then we're gonna have to fight or follow up and get the money back and things like that. So the ideal situation is to just replenish your own circuit breaker account, which we have control over.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this goal before we move forward?
I think there's one point there, Ms. Madam Chair, to make sure that we continue to highlight, go back to the number. Because this is gonna be a flexible number that you're gonna see, that the committee's gonna wanna keep an eye on. It's important to keep in mind the parameters that we have to set, because we don't want to establish, and we gotta be really conscious not to establish some type of structural deficit going forward because we prepay and offset so much of our budget into next year, it never recaptures in terms of revenue. You'll notice as we start to get into the chapter seventy for this year, even though it's ten million dollars, we offset a considerable amount of it last year because we knew the Student Opportunity Act was coming. So we're looking at actually an eight point five million roughly increase of the baseline expenses because of the amount of offsetting, which as it turns out, our forecasting was accurate, Student Opportunity Act came in. So we didn't create any type of fiscal cliff, didn't create any type of structural deficit. But now Student Opportunity Act's here. So now we only have a couple of other, uh, recurring streams of revenue that could replenish whatever we offset here going forward. So that's just going to be an important eye for the committee to keep, uh, to keep on top of this number here. Your confidence that one point two is still safe, you actually can go up probably a little bit higher and still have confidence. We think that two to three million range is going to be the max that the committee probably wants to offset into next year. Uh, but you start getting on that number and it's going to start to come. Mickey, have you got your, uh, Mickey, if you can hit mute, you got your, uh, music going. Thank you. There's a, so that's just going to be an important to keep your eye on that, uh, that parameter. Thank you. Go ahead, Billy Joe.
One point I would like to make, too, is if you could recall a couple of years ago when we had, um, when it was going to be a deferring of a pay, um, our sick leave buyback account and I was like, you don't do that, that's not good accounting. Well, that was pushing costs forward. We're actually saying, hey, let us prepay something that we have the upper, so that we don't waste current funds and it will help free up funds next year so that we don't have to make cuts. So there's a difference between those two things, pushing it forward or prepaying it. There's two different things there. Um, goal number three was to ensure that every school is safe and well, um, safe and welcoming to every student and every family. We recommend one point six million dollars for this. Um, the investment priority here is facilities improvement. As you guys have heard about, um, in prior reports, the EMG report, which was published in two thousand eighteen, it recommends that we spend about seven point eight million dollars annually for ten years on the school building. Um, the district, our lower public schools maintains two accounts for facility projects. We have the building repair funds, which is only a hundred and fifty thousand. It's used for replacing carpet, tile floors, door hardware, fence repairs, keys and locks, et cetera. Capital improvement funds, we only have a hundred thousand in that. And it's been used in the past to install the new park at Moody's School, new restaurant, restroom floors, carpet replacement. Um, we have dozens of additional, um, required improvements and projects that have been identified. They are allowable on net school spending if we don't exceed the one hundred and fifty thousand per project, um, mark. And it can be initiated this spring and completed by the end of the summer. Um, I can't see this. The resource needed for facilities improvement, the director of facilities, he assessed all of the competing interests as well as the net school spending requirements and came up with the list. An additional review by the facility subcommittee is recommended with an emphasis on the Renaissance schools, student impact, safety improvements and projects that can be completed by the end of the summer. And again, it's with a ceiling of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per project. Recommendations on the specific project will be brought back to the school committee for action following the facility subcommittee. That was the end of, um, goal number three. Any questions?
Yes, I do. I just have a one thing I want to say. I love the presentation so far. I have a couple of questions I'll leave to the end, uh, that I, I read it three times. I think so many times. I didn't see much talk about athletics, uh, music, or the arts. And, uh, you know, we're going to need money, but I'd like to get a number if I could miss the superintendent. And, uh, if Ms. Desmond could come close to a disaster topic is how much we spend per pupil, uh, in that type of, uh, worries, arts, music and sports, just to make sure who that's big is spending, uh, enough money in those, those three different areas, if I could, if that's not a big deal. If it's, yeah.
Um, Mr. Hoi, the reason we don't have any of that on this recommend, on this report is because we're not allowed to prepay for, um, you know, those type of things. And with school, we already have a budget for those costs in this year's budget. So we don't have any, um, additional need in those areas at, right now with kids being remote. Um, so we actually have that on the list of consideration for when we're building our following year budget.
Well, and, and one last thing I have to say, uh, thank you very much for this extra time, Ms. Martin, but uh, we, we made a, I can't say too much either, but we made a promise, uh, to fix a contract of somebody's and, uh, I think when you got extra money and we're talking extra money, it's something we need to do and we need to do it a real I have to bring a motion forward to do it. We all know who I'm talking about. Uh, to me, very important for me. I'm one of the six or seven bosses and, uh, this team, what you're doing now. Look at, just to go and help the schools out. Look at what this, uh, I didn't like that song that come on the radio either, by the way. Uh, you know, that might have been a kick at my superintendent. I don't like things like that. Almost like we got hacked if you didn't hear that. Uh, but Connie, uh, Ms. Martin, um, I just think we need to fix just a couple of issues. I don't want to say no more. Hopefully you understand what I'm saying. If not, I'll call you off the air. I think that's what we need to do before we start saying how we're going to fix everything else.
Okay, we certainly talk about that, that part.
And I just want to, uh, there's another one bothering me, eh, that works for us on our team that sometimes I think they deserve a stipend maybe if they don't get a raise because I see how much that person's making and it, it's really starting to bother me a little bit. And I don't want to say too much out to the public, but I figured this is the time to say it. Thank you for the time, Ms. Martin.
I, I have a question about facilities. Sorry.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Um, I want to say right up front, I'm very excited about this idea of looking at the Renaissance schools, uh, you know, putting a focus there and the impact on student safety and, uh, you know, that kind of ball ballpark world to be looking at facility improvements, although we all know we need facility improvements across the district. Um, my question is, um, would this, uh, I, I'm hoping that equity will fit into this. And I'll give you an example, like, a while ago, maybe a, a two years ago, uh, Mr. Underwood did a report for us about uh, schools that don't have outside play facilities. Uh, and I know there's one school that has two playgrounds. And so when we're looking at the facility improvements with this idea on student impact, safety and projects that can be completed, that would be something that would be, um, near and dear to my heart to try to have that, that every school has an outside place that children can go out and especially with the COVID environment, to be able to be outside and have a safe uh, play, outside play space would be important to me. Uh, my question now is, in terms of some of these projects, how does that work with, um, the city as the actual landlord for these facilities? And how do we balance, you know, doing work and working with our, our, the city unions and things like that to make sure that we uh, go ahead in a way that's, um, you know, collaborative?
So, Madam Chair, if I could?
Yep.
So there's, uh, that's going to be the discussion within the facility subcommittee. We do think this is going to be an extensive conversation within the facility subcommittee. Uh, one point six million dollars is a very, very, while it's a large investment for the school committee, given the history of the investments from the school committee, uh, because of the landlord relationship, it still is very small compared to the needs within our buildings. So there's going to be a lot of prioritization. But, uh, everything's a collaborative effort. Certainly there are additional constraints related to facilities, related, given the, uh, the dynamic here as, uh, most school districts have, if not all school districts within their cities, uh, and the facility ownership of the, of the, of those buildings. But, uh, here are two things to keep in mind. No asset greater than five thousand dollars can be procured. So we, as the school district, you can't, as a school committee, procure an asset, a facility asset greater than five thousand dollars. That's, that's part of that relationship where it's the, the facilities and those assets are owned by the city. The second is you can't procure any service, any project that exceeds a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That also is part of that balance. Now, there's a lot of projects that sit within that and regardless of what projects, it still all requires a collaborative working relationship. Uh, so that's also part of the reason that we think this is a separate subcommittee conversation to go through not only the prioritization, but the ins and outs of those projects. And Mr. Underwood, uh, will be there for the facility subcommittee, for the few that are on that subcommittee for Thursday. Uh, and you'll see this entire report that's referenced here where you just have a screenshot, um, that'll all be finalized and put into the project, into the packet for Thursday.
Just as a quick follow-up, would playgrounds fall into that category at all? Or outdoor play spaces, even if it's not a play structure?
Buildings and grounds are all part of the same conversation when it comes to net school spending. Uh, whether the playground and the playground space, it depends on the, what we're talking about there. You'll notice and Doc, Mr. Underwood will share with you, uh, there is going to be some grounds work that he's, he's going to be recommending. Uh, but the five thousand dollar limit and the hundred and fifty thousand dollar total project cost, those are the lines. So some playgrounds, you could imagine, might cross those thresholds and some maybe not. Um, but it's, it's just those are the kind of lines to think about when you think about the tenant landlord relationship and how it relates to net school spending.
So if we could anticipate, um, Ms. Superintendent, because I mean, we'll have this facilities meeting. I know it's coming up quick on Thursday. Would there be any capacity to kind of take into consideration these schools that we know do not have an outside play area? And maybe anticipate, it may not be, uh, building a brand-new playground, but there could be incremental steps we could take that would fall within the, the parameters of that one fifty or five thousand. I don't know if that's been part of your thinking up till this point for you and Ricky and the rest of the team, but it might be something that with a couple of days, they could see if there's anything we might want to add into that.
Yeah, it's certain, if you actually look on the, just the snapshot of the working dashboard that's working to finalize, you'll see the Bartlett gives the example of, uh, you know, the paving the back playground area. Uh, you'll see that on the top snapshot. But, uh, Dr. Hall, uh, does that a request, uh, is that request able to be met ahead of Thursday?
I believe so, yes. I'll have to talk to you a little bit more about it.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, quick question?
Yep.
Um, when is the facilities, so the biggest problem I've seen over the years is like always the heat and the control. So is that going to be part of the conversation on Thursday?
There is a, there's an additional assessment, uh, right now, Mr. Underwood's suggesting that there's about eleven and twelve million dollars alone worth of work on the HVAC systems related to heat, um, heating that would have to be done district-wide. Some of that could fall within the net school spending. The hundred and fifty thousand, five thousand, some of it could not. Um, but you'll see here the HVAC project index, that is something else that they're working on. If you look at the, uh, top snapshot, uh, capital building and program project, and then the exhibit B snapshot around HVAC projects, that's all under analysis within our operations office. Some of it, Mr. Mayor, could fall within net school spending and some of it maybe not. Dr. Hall, um, do you have any further detail to add now ahead of the facility subcommittee?
Nothing further than that. We'd have to look at those spending limits, which may affect our ability to spend money on these controls.
Okay. I mean, that seems to be the biggest problem. But we'll talk about that Thursday. Thank you.
And, and not to plow too much into Thursday because I know it'll be a big meeting, but, um, any kind of update on where we are with the school building? Um, process? I mean, obviously we're up to our eyeballs in it with the, with the new high school. But I know that we have been able to use those funds to major project, to process tools, whether it was or, or
Oh, yeah.
boilers and whatnot. Just we could maybe get an update on Thursday where we are in the process, if we can, uh, submit new applications or you know, just what options we may have.
Yeah, and I think that's a good opportunity just to give a lot of credit to, uh, the mayor, the city manager and the team for, for getting those applications through. Uh, we have another project that's pending now at the Shaughnessy School. So, uh, the roofing projects, the, um, boilers, all, all have been moving, uh, at what I understand, at a far, far more rapid clip than, uh, under uh, past iterations of, uh, of, of, uh, the city's governance structure. So, uh, I think it's an opportunity to give credit to the manager and the mayor's team. Uh, so I think, Ms. Martin, I think that's an opportunity for both an update and also some recognition. So, Mr. Hall, Dr. Hall, can you make sure that we can give a brief update to the facility subcommittee at that?
Yes, definitely. I'll work with the, uh, city and summarize on that for Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions before we move forward? Okay, here we go. Twenty-two.
So goal four is, um, increasing community engagement and empowering the family. Um, the investment priority here would be the online student registration. Um, let's try to find a way to hide. Um, in response to the two thousand twenty pandemic, uh, FRC implemented online registration for the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year. It was internally built utilizing the Google forms. And, um, it gave us an opportunity to understand the strengths and challenges of conducting an online registration process. One of the strengths that we found was that it afforded the families the opportunity to begin the registration process at home using a computer or a mobile phone. Limitations of the current system, parents have to send the registration documents via email rather than as an attachment to an online application, which would be if we had a, um, online registration software. Um, the registration clerks have to retype all of the information from each of the forms for each student into the Aspen student information system. I mean, this right here increases the chance for hu- human error. Parents are unable to revisit their submissions and update contact information in a company, um, in other document. I can't see again. Sorry, I'm going to move you guys face. But, um, and, um, the parents are unable to revisit their submissions and the current system does not have a parent portal, a current parent portal component. The report and reporting views cannot be accessed by other departments that are critical to registration, such as nurses, language testers, special ed, ed, et cetera. Um, the vetting process, there was a cross-departmental team reviewed, um, the existing registration platforms. That included the webmaster, data offense, family resource center. The registration platform vendors, um, whose platforms were, um, could be integrated with our student information system, they were all invited to present their platform to the team. Our recommendation, after reviewing three vendors' presentations and receiving quotes for the implementation and maintenance parts, um, the team selected the Aspen online registration system as the most cost-efficient and best data-aligned system for lower public schools. Um, Fallit School Sys- Solutions is on the state-approved vendor list and it's currently the provider of the district student information system, which is Aspen. The subsidiary, X Two Development Corporation, is a provider of the Aspen O L R platform. The total approximate cost of this, um, recommendation would be sixty-three thousand dollars. And that was the end of goal four. Any questions? No questions? Okay. So move this over here. So the recommended action following the review by this finance subcommittee, it is recommended that the subcommittee forward the adjustments to the full committee for action at the March third, two thousand twenty-one meeting so that we can initiate the financial processes needed to translate the forecasted budget savings into resources that support students, families and school communities. More or less, we are asking that we, um, vote on a budget transfer on March third, moving these funds from the savings account to the, um, recommended accounts listed in this presentation. And that's the end of the presentation.
So the notes that we've heard, we'll certainly go back and make sure that we can assess further research and, and bring back updates, of course, as part of the March third presentation. Um, but Madam Chair, we would certainly be open if there's additional guidance or feedback from the committee, uh, from the subcommittee, uh, for us to take back to research. We'd certainly like to be able to hear those.
If there was one area that I, I would like to see maybe some additional attention paid, uh, particularly with the parent engagement, if we had any opportunity to be able to offer professional development to the, uh, site councils over and above what's already kind of anticipated, um, just in terms of being able to offer them, uh, you know, almost in the same vein as we do with, with, uh, teachers, you know, asking them to invest time, being able to provide a stipend for that time. Um, you know, the investment in, in having the, um, the, the liaisons there for translation purposes and all that. I mean, it seems like we could perhaps do some kind of a, kind of site council summit. I mean, again, there's, and I know there's a lot of planning in that, but I, I, when I look at having funds that we really need to expend, I always want to see us investing in the things that I always want to see us investing in the things that will pay dividends moving forward. And the idea of being able to build something like that. And maybe it's something that happens, you know, that we can't do through this, that we have to do in July or something like that. But it seems like, you know, $63,000 in parent engagement that that we could make a more significant investment in that goal, in that area. Um, and it's certainly something that we place as an incredibly high priority, um, in terms of ensuring that our families and our parents are effectively engaged with us.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Martin, if I could, I think that's an excellent point. You know, we've been discussing, uh, when's the appropriate time to launch a parent academy? And maybe this, maybe this this opportunity here, just like it's accelerating our digital learning plan. Perhaps it's an opportunity to accelerate that work, uh, towards a a fully functioning parent academy, looking at our school site councils as the first set of course offerings within. Uh, Ms. Phillips, is, um, is it possible to do a a little bit of added analysis there ahead of the March 3rd meeting for the committee?
Um, yes, we can definitely look into that. And they did provide some input on on areas of training they felt would be useful.
I would also say, you know, names drive me nuts, Mr. Superintendent. Um, but I mean, a parent academy really would indicate the way the ones teaching them. And the reality is, is that we both sides have a lot to learn in terms of engagement and whatnot. So summit appeals to me more than parent academy.
Noted.
Yeah, thank you. I take that as a as a polite gesture. Thank you very much.
Uh, and
Yes, Mr. Howie, go right ahead.
Uh, Ms. Turner, thank you, uh, for this report. Um, I did sit with a friend of mine that knows a lot more about budgets than I do. And, uh, after I read it three times, I had him read it and we had, we came up with two questions. Uh, I don't believe it's anything real big, but I just want you to hear it. One was, uh, I guess my question should be exactly where there's the budget adjustments will fall in the budget document. And what is expected to be temporary? And what is expected to continue into the next fiscal year? Uh, that was his. I don't know what he meant by that, but I just wanted to say that. And the one that I came up with was with transportation. Um, we voted not too long ago, Mr. Superintendent, to limit, limit the amount of, uh, kids eligible for transportation due to the COVID, uh, transportation protocols. And it's almost like, you know, social distancing in the schools. That's why you're going to be running out of room. But last week, those protocols, uh, basically, I like to say it this way, went out the window. Because they're saying now that all you got to do on a bus is keep the window open, at least one window open, maybe two. So you might want to check on that, um, because I'm a little concerned about busing. Um, and I'm always concerned about busing, but thank you, Billy Joe, for your time. And, uh, it was a great report. Thank you very much.
So, thank you, Mr. Howie, Madam Chair, if I could.
Absolutely.
Uh, so, Mr. Howie, you're right on the transportation. There's a little bit of a disconnect between the state guidance on transportation and the federal guidance on transportation. The guidance did change significantly. If the committee, uh, from the state in terms of the distancing on school buses, uh, you're accurate there, Mr. Howie. If the committee wanted to adjust within its reopening plan addendum, those those policies as they relate to social distancing on trans on school buses, that could, that's certainly within, uh, the purview of the school committee to adjust. Uh, right now, what we're planning here is availability and access to the full fleet of buses. So it wouldn't change your budget adjustment. It would change your policy on transportation, which Desi's offered. Uh, that authorization to school committees to adjust it. And that'll be a decision for the school committee to undertake as it looks at reopening. The other question I think that your friend was referring to is which of these expenses are recurring and which ones are nonrecurring? Ms. Turner, if you could, uh, within the, just take a note for the, uh, presentation that'll come back to the committee on the third. If the committee chooses to bring this forward to the full committee on the third, if you can put a note as to which expenses would be recurring expenses versus nonrecurring expenses. Uh, one that's easy is obviously the online registration system. That would be a recurring expense. The first, the first year is more expensive, but I wouldn't anticipate that we would bring back to you to discontinue it, uh, in subsequent years. So that would then be recurring. Most of these expenses, though, however, most of them are one-time expenses. There are some others in there that may be, uh, small recurring and we can note those. And, Ms. Turner, if you could go through each each transfer, each adjustment that'll be brought back and like the recurring or nonrecurring expense. Uh, Mr. Howie, I think that's what your your colleague was getting at.
You're right. Thank you.
There was another portion of that question, though, that asked, um, and I didn't hear you clearly. Um, what the the other portion of the question said something about where it was in the budget book?
Uh,
Yes.
Yes, where it will fall in the budget document.
Well, it would move like when you have a budget transfer. Being that this is a one-time occurrence, it's not something that we're saying, we know, we're not saying for now on, we're not going to invest in textbooks. We're only going to invest in technology. So it would stay as a, um, a consistent change in the budget book. This would be a just a one-time thing because we have a one-time savings and we're going to do the nonrecurring, um, investment, such as the big investment in technology or the big investment in PD. So we don't know if that will continue on in the budget book and, um, future years, but it would be in my budget book, you know, in different line items.
Hey, any other questions?
Yep, question.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
So the last one, the online student res- uh, registration, that's a recurring cost at 63,000?
I believe that that's the initial initiation cost of to get the system set up, which is typically anytime you get software as a service, the first year is more expensive. Uh, Ms. Phillips, what is the recurring maintenance cost for, uh, to continue the licenses if the committee chose?
I believe it would be 37,000.
Thirty-seven annually if the committee chose and we would ultimately have to bring bring back to you the full full contract and, uh, everything. Is that correct, Ms. Turner, in terms of procurement process?
Yes, and that that amount, the sixty, um, the 63,000 would cover through June 2022.
Okay, how come that's not in the report then? You make it sound like we're going to spend 63,000 and then we're all set.
Uh, that wasn't the intent, so this is about
I know it's not the intent, but that's the way it looks.
So we'll make that adjustment going into the school committee meeting.
And you want us to vote on this the third?
That would be our recommendation so that we can, uh, set our school, uh, budgets starting in March.
Why, again, and you can't do this to us. Why would you bring that up the night of the vote and say, oh, yeah, an extra 37,000 a year? That's just not right.
We're not suggesting you vote on it tonight. The school committee can't
You said on March 3rd.
March 3rd, yes, I would bring, we'd bring back to you any updates that come from the committee tonight. So we'll put that
Oh, you got me any big surprises like that? I mean, that's 37,000 a year. I just, you know, that's just not right. Um, are there any other surprises? What are the other recurring costs coming back?
So that was the request from Mr. Howie. We'll make sure that we note in there any recurring
Like, I'm not going to vote on it on March 3rd, but I just get a whole list. What if there's like a million dollars worth of recurring cost?
So you wouldn't vote on any multi-year contracts on the third, but we'll make sure that we can note those. Uh, there will, there won't be any surprises within. That's not the intent to have any surprises.
All right, and then going back to the air indoor quality, um, how many purifiers do we have right now? A thousand thirty-two?
Yes.
And we need 300, we need 200 more?
If you, if you want to open up, uh, additional space, then that would be the recommendation that that would support some additional space, uh, gymnasiums, libraries. The biggest constraint that you're going to be facing and as the committee considers its addendum to the reopening plan is space. Uh, that's the biggest constraint. Uh, we would anticipate that we're going to be recommending to open up additional space beyond standard classrooms. If that's the case, we think this would support, uh, being able to do that in a safe way. Uh, that's the, so the 200 additional would support those non-standard classroom spaces. You currently have 1,032 with 974 standard classrooms. But if you think about the size of the gymnasium at the high school, for instance, each one of these only covers a certain amount of square footage. So one unit wouldn't be sufficient for those types of square footage that are in cafeterias and gymnasiums. You would need multiple units.
And when do you think we might open up gymnasiums?
We're anticipating to bring back to you an addendum to the reopening plan for March 17th. We'll have a discussion for it, uh, school committee feedback on March 3rd. And we'll bring back to you, uh, a full, a full addendum on March 17th. So we'll have a, a further discussion on the third to hear the direction that the committee is looking to go. Uh, you would need to open up those, though, on your April 1 expansion if you want to fully expand as much as you possibly can with social distancing guidelines. That would be part of the April 1 expansion.
All right, and how many we, how many air purifiers are we using now with 3% and 25%?
Dr. Hall?
Uh, we're, we're using almost all of those 1,032, Mayor. 1,032, although we, instead of wasting some, we have them in some spaces that might not normally have an air purifier, just to have as many running as possible. But this extra, uh, 200, uh, would provide a reserve as well and give us flexibility. We also, uh, as you can see from the slides, uh, petitioned Desi and they donated another 30 to us, uh, which I believe have just been delivered or on the way.
All right, and then for the April 7th, for the March 17th, uh, discussion, are we going to talk about, um, space, the six-foot space? Are we going to look at in, uh, decreasing that six-foot space or is that not even on the table to talk about or?
The school committee could choose to, uh, discuss that. Uh, the current guidance we're following is we're following six feet within our current planning. Uh, the school committee can certainly entertain that anytime it wants and we could bring that back or whatever additional requirements would be uh, necessitated by the school committee going in that direction. But right now, we're planning with six feet. Um, we're open to additional guidance from the committee.
All right, and at 50%, can we still keep six feet, you think?
Uh, we're currently going through that planning process. It depends on the, the survey is just completed, uh, today. So we're going to have to analyze the surveys of, uh, the amount of students that want to come back is one question. The other that we have to analyze and assess is square footage in these non-traditional spaces. So before I give you that firm answer, I believe so. But we'll start, we'll start to be able to formalize that and finalize that the further we go along here. So we'll have more information on the third and then even more information on the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
I had, sorry, I had a couple of questions. Um, I, I just, um, I think this is a good idea. I like the stuff you're talking about doing and using the savings in a way that's going to really impact um, our goals for learning and for our students. I guess, uh, for me, I would like to see more of a distinction for next week about what's going to be used to help us with our comeback in April. Because I'm concerned we only have five weeks. So when you talk about, like, I know Ms. Desmond mentioned, um, cameras and, uh, professional development and kind of separate out what pieces of this plan are going to directly impact our, our ability to, for in-person learning in April. We're going to a hybrid model, you know, we're looking at districts who've had months to get used to this. Um, we're asking our teachers to learn on the fly, learn quickly. And we need to have the, uh, supports in place, whether it's staffing or equipment, whatever that entails. So when we talk about this, maybe add a slide that breaks out. These are the things that are going to immediately impact, um, our, you know, in-person learning that we're going to be doing April 1st. Uh, I, I think that would be helpful for me because I am concerned. We've got a limited amount of time, five weeks. And then we don't have that much time that we even have them in school before the year ends. So I want to, as much as possible, enable our staff to hit the ground running, recognizing that this whole approach to, you know, simultaneously teaching students in front of you and students remotely is a challenge. And, uh, it's not the best way to be doing teaching and learning. But, uh, there are some positives that can be gotten from that. And I just want to know what we're doing to get ready for that. Uh, and I think it's embedded within here, uh, and maybe just to flesh it out a little bit more would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Martin?
Yes, Mr. Howie.
And, uh, the one thing the mayor said was that 37,000 a year that we're spending. If I remember correctly, that was because we had a policy change on the way they register. I mean, their child in school. And, uh, we were telling them, I thought the way the policy read, we were telling them you must register, um, online. And I think this is the results of it. It's basically saying not everybody can do that. Uh, I think the mayor might have a point, meaning I think most people know how to use a phone or a computer that they could register. But I think we all made a decision. I don't know if we want to vote on it or not, but I think the 37,000 a year would probably be because if it's a smaller amount of people that probably don't know how to use it online. I know I don't, I don't use a lot of online stuff because I'm just getting, because of our IT department to improve. But, uh, I think that's what that was all about, wasn't it, Mr. Superintendent? To make sure we're not telling people you have to do it online?
Well, the, the 37 would be the, the ongoing fee that we pay now for the service. For the online service.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Moving to responses for, for families who aren't comfortable with the technology. But that's an important concern because I absolutely agree with you. It, it's going to be paramount that we have multiple access points, even if they ultimately all feed into the online. But we're going to have to have the necessary kind of, you know, scaffolding to make sure that that families can access it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Superintendent, you could have answered that.
Oh, yeah, it's, 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 it's a good point, though, for the rest of the committee that software now works as a service. So you're, you're paying for a service. So this cost would be a one-year service. So if the committee chose to continue the service, there would be a continued service fee. Certainly, the committee could choose to discontinue that service, um, anytime that you wanted. Or you can choose to not engage in a multi-year service agreement. But this provides you through till, uh, June 2022, which does take you through a, a considerable amount of time in the life of a school. You're talking about a, a full year of registration this year till June 22nd, 2022. So, uh, just continuing that as a service fee. Anytime you enlist the service, software as a service these days, there's a continuation fee.
And any other questions? If not, an interesting motion to accept this as a report of progress and recommend that it be presented to the full committee on March 3rd for further
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Howie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I don't believe we have any other topics, do we?
I have a quick question for the superintendent.
Go right ahead.
How was our first day at school, uh, for our school kiddos today?
The, the first day, the initial reports I have were are that the day went smooth. Uh, we have, uh, I was at the 80-day today and I can tell you, I'm not sure who was happier, students or teachers. But I'm, I'm, I'm positive that our parents were even happier, uh, that schools were open. But they were jubilant teachers and students at the 80-day and they had all but two students present today. Uh, if you recall, they were down to 24% average daily attendance and remote. So a big day at the 80-day and I was happy to be able to be there and enjoy that.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
That's great.
Yes, Mr. Howie?
Thing I'd like to say on top of that, I, I talked to three different parents at the back of the Pine School today. Uh, they actually stopped me. I did have my mask on too. Uh, but they were so elated about their children being in school. And, uh, the, these are pretty severe cases of children that I've seen. And I never seen anybody this happy getting back to school. Those three parents smiles ear to ear. All of you should be very proud of you. So I know I'm proud of myself that the 3% is in there. Thank you so much.
I'll, I'll tell you this, Mr. Howie, I appreciate sharing that. And school committee members, please give me a call if anybody wants to join me at a school, uh, just a brief interaction if I could share, Mrs. Madam, uh, Chair. Uh, student at the 80-day, these are the types of interactions you can have in person that you don't have remotely. I was walking through the school. I walked in the classroom. I said, how's everybody's day today? This young man came up to me. He says, he said, why do they call you Doctor Boy? And I said, well, I'm, I'm Doctor Boy because I went to a lot of school. He said, he said, so I need to go to a lot of school to be a doctor. He said, why are you carrying, like he said, why are you carrying a notepad? Because I have a notepad with me everywhere I go. I said, well, this is where I take notes for all of the things that I learned still in school today. He's, uh, he asked his teacher if he too could have a notepad, uh, so that he can make sure he takes down his notes too. So he He's, uh, he asked his teacher if he too could have a notepad, uh, so that he can make sure he takes down his notes too. So he got a notepad. It was, it was, it was enjoyment that we can have in remote settings to have those types of interactions with our young people. And the eighty-day, uh, we call it the happiest place on earth. It's a great place to be. So, uh, congratulations to that staff on a great first day. And congratulations to all of our staff. Unfortunately, I couldn't get to all of our schools. Uh, but, uh, from what I hear, uh, Mr. Dakota, it was a, it was a positive first day and everybody had those joyful interactions that Mr. Howie was just able to share.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to, uh, adjourn by Mr. Howie.
Second.
By Mr. Dakota. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you all very much for joining.
You're welcome.
Be Wednesday.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Hello?
It's still on the screen, Billy Joe.
I'm trying to shut it. Are you?